It being six o'clock, I call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission, February 21st, 2018. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary, Sherri Herbrook, prior to the start of the meeting. For those who didn't pick up an agenda before the start of the meeting, feel free to come up with a card as you go, as long as you arrive before the item you want to talk about is actually into a public hearing. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. And while Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order, both of you, and decorum, and obey the orders of the chair. So Sherri, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Merk is absent, Vice Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Commissioners Corbin.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Dagielo.
Here.
Powers.
Very good. And Commissioner Corbin, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next agenda item is Public Communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. I have no cards. Is there anyone who wishes to speak during public communications? Seeing none, we will end public communications and move on to the consent item. There is one item, the minutes of the regular meeting of Planning Commission, December 20th, 2017. Does anyone on the commission have changes, corrections, additions, whatever, to those minutes? Okay. Oh, Commissioner Nolan?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes from the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on December 20th, 2017.
Okay. That's a motion?
I'll second.
A motion and seconded. Any discussion? Could we take a roll, Sherri?
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Dagielo?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes. Thank you all. Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts for items on the agenda. Commissioner Corbin? We have only a discussion item. Is this only for?
So we didn't really have?
Okay. Site, there's no site visit really appropriate here. That's fine. Okay. Then we'll move on. There are no public hearing items tonight. We do have one discussion item, residential solar access guidelines. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Quilisi, and members of the commission. This is your consideration of a recommendation to the City Council concerning residential solar access guidelines. The City Council adopted an ordinance in June 2014, that's a correction to your staff report, which adopted, the City Council adopted an ordinance that established protection requirements for solar access for homes in the Ojai Valley, in the city of Ojai, rather. Since that time, and apparently at that time, the Planning Commission City Council, or the City Council, may have received a presentation, I guess it was the Planning Commission, on the city of Santa Barbara's solar access guidelines, and found those to be appropriate for potential implementation in the city of Ojai. Since the adoption of the ordinance, staff has been using those guidelines. The city of Santa Barbara is the model, adapted to the specific ordinance of the city of Ojai, and making the appropriate references. So it's about a year and a half, or three and a half years, I guess, that we've been using those guidelines. Sherri has had some extensive experience with it, and she can answer any questions that you may have, but the staff planners have also had experience with it, not only in looking at new development projects, but applying these to existing homes for solar applications. And we found them to be very easy to work with, pretty simple. The formula to deal with, to find out what the restriction may be on a new residential structure is found on page four of 14, Attachment A. This is a two-page handout. The first page provides instructions as to how to determine the appropriate compass direction, given your lot is in consideration. And then the second page provides some pretty easy diagrams and text to follow to determine what the heights restrictions would be for a new structure, to be sure it doesn't encroach upon or adversely impact potential solar access for the roof of the adjacent structure on the northerly property line. So we have found it, as I said, easy to work with, and we think it's worth your consideration this evening and recommendation to the City Council, that this does become the official solar access guidelines for the city of Ojai. Sherri, is there anything you want to add to?
That we didn't add to this package is we do have a shadow plan example that we give to the applicants to help them know how to.
I saw that.
Yeah.
I saw one of those in here.
There's, there's an.
Shadow diagram preparation instructions, 13 and 14 of 14 in Attachment A.
Right. And then there's a large, we have at the counter, an exhibit which does not reproduce well at all, that we can share with homeowners or designers as they consider development. So we didn't reproduce that here, but essentially the shadow diagram does the same thing.
Okay.
Oh, just a quick question. So basically, I just want to be clear on this. So our, this would be on page 13 to 14, Attachment A. What you're saying is the exact same information that we're seeing here is on the 11 by 17, it's just a different format, otherwise the same information?
And actually, yes.
Okay.
Although it does give some other examples of shadows.
A little bit more information.
Exactly.
But generally, we're good.
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry. I attended that meeting where the Santa Barbara guidelines were presented, and they don't have height restrictions. It's just a formula based on whether or not you block somebody's solar access. But at that point, we did adopt a new height restriction of 25 feet. This is not in lieu of that, it's in addition to that?
That is correct.
Okay. The other thing that came up, interestingly enough, at that meeting was that if in fact you do a two-story addition, or a second floor on a house, and you use that 25-foot height restriction, and you have decent floor heights, you know, more than seven and a half feet, that actually it doesn't leave you the appropriate pitch to get the right angle for the optimum solar access. I mean, you know, you can tip it up, but then obviously that's going to be higher than supposed to.
So you're saving your neighbor's solar access, but compromising your own, you're saying?
No. No. What I'm saying is that your roof pitch is not necessarily the optimal roof pitch for the.
On a two-story, on a two-story to meet the height restriction. So if we're meeting the height restriction, and you have a two-story house.
Then the roof is, the roof is too flat for you to get good solar access.
Right. So you wind up with a fairly shallow pitch, as opposed to a decent pitch on your roof.
So you're compromising your own solar access to save your neighbor.
You know, I.
No. It's, it's, it's not, nothing to do with solar, it has to do with the height restrictions.
Right.
The height restrictions determine, you have a pitch like this, you know, with a two-story, and really the optimum pitch is like a 512 pitch, right?
But you can't have that.
But that goes above the height restriction of 25 feet.
Right. And even though.
So it's really the height restriction element that she's talking about.
Right.
How it interacts with the solar.
Right. And I, you know, was not in agreement with the height restriction. I thought that the way Santa Barbara did it was better, which is that they didn't have a height restriction. You couldn't block your neighbor's solar access, but you could get a better pitch so that you could get appropriate angle on your roof, both aesthetically and for solar panels.
Isn't there something, I read, I thought I read something that the city will allow certain alterations to get, to be able to, where did I find that?
Right. They said if you had an architectural feature, so I asked if a nice roof line was an architectural feature, and everybody laughed, like I wasn't joking, I meant that.
Sure. You know, some features, not the entire roof.
You could have a turret, not the entire roof.
Right. So the question is, I understand why we have the height limitation, but I also am
total agreement that the more solar we have, the better. So what would be, if you wanted the correct roof angle to get the optimum solar, how much higher, above 25 feet, would the roof have to be?
That depends on, well, if you use a two-story with eight foot.
With the two-story.
You know, eight-foot sides, with a one foot, I mean, minimum eight, right?
Right.
So you got six inches off the grade, eight, eight, 16, plus a foot for the, so you get 16, 17, 17 and a half. And again, it's the pitch, it depends on the width of the structure.
That leaves you seven and a half, depends on how wide the roof is.
So potentially, you, I mean, I understand.
Eight feet, which you could, so if it's a 30-foot house, you got 15-foot, it'd be seven and a half. You know, it could work in some cases, depends on the width of the house.
Yeah. I, like I said, I agree with.
Plus what I wound up having to do on my addition, I mean, I couldn't even have an overhang on it because.
Because you wanted the solar, but you couldn't.
Well, I wanted to get as much pitch as I could on it.
Right. A little bit of a conundrum here.
And you could also frame up the panels, provided it doesn't exceed the height of the ridge.
That's.
Well, it depends on the location of panels.
The whole point was to get the right angle for the, for the panels.
Depends on the depth of your.
Right, because you can.
Exactly.
And what Matt's saying is you could come down from the pitch, from the peak of the roof.
You just leave the panels right on the roof, yeah.
You know, they don't usually go right to the peak of the roof panel.
Right.
They're somewhere in the, in the middle. So if you change the pitch, the top of the panel will still be below the peak of the roof.
Right.
There are ways to work around it.
Can we ask a question?
Not yet.
Not yet? Behave yourself out there.
We're dealing.
You told us that.
We're, we're, we're in that period where the commission is asking questions regarding the staff report, and I have a few myself, but I want to make sure everybody else gets their questions in first. I do think that what we are called upon tonight to look at is the solar access guidelines, not the height restriction. But it, it, in my view, it would be perfectly reasonable, if it was the sense of the commission, to say that we think the solar access guidelines, whatever they turn out to be, would constitute a sufficient height limitation on houses, and that the 25-foot, we would think is unnecessary. That would be a point of view that I think you would share.
Yeah. Or, because I do understand why we have the height limitation, does the height limitation, or do we propose that it gets changed to something a little bit higher to accommodate for optimum solar access on a two?
Or just eliminate it?
Well, I think by eliminating, then it gets back to the thing of, oh, then somebody could do a three-foot, or a three-story, or whatever, and I know that's been an issue. Well, anyway, we'll talk about it more.
The 20, the 25 was for a two-story structure? 25 feet?
I mean, it could even be a one-story if you had vaulted ceilings and something else, so, yeah.
It's, oh, so 25 is for any structure?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. And we're correct on that, because I know the city of Ventura's, for a single story, is 15, in the foothills, anyway, we're in that area, for a single structure, and then for the two-story, it's different.
Yeah, I think for the hillside ordinance, that is correct.
That is for the hillside ordinance, okay, yeah.
Any more questions for staff? I have a few. In, on the first page, page one of two of the initial report, Matt, as you mentioned, it says, the, since the adoption of the ordinance, you've been applying the Santa Barbara guidelines, modified to reflect the Ojai code. I'm curious, and recognizing this was probably all done before your term in your present office, but what kind of changes were made to the Santa Barbara guidelines? Because I think there are some, I want to come back to some potential discrepancies between the guidelines and the ordinance, but what kinds of changes were made to the Santa Barbara guidelines to adapt them to the Ojai code?
Actually, I have seen the Santa Barbara guidelines as well. So the Santa Barbara guidelines made reference to a couple of geographic communities or neighborhoods.
Okay.
Where there was.
Certainly that wouldn't be appropriate here.
Correct. And I think, as far as I can tell, the only changes that were made to these guidelines with respect to Ojai was just to reference the Ojai code sections. I don't think there's anything.
Ah, okay.
I don't think there's anything unique or different in that respect.
You know, one other thing was, I believe we also added, because I remember I brought this up at the meeting, that we should allow solar on, say like a carport, and we included that into the ordinance. I should go back and look, I'm sorry that I missed looking at that.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't recall seeing that in the ordinance, but.
It wasn't just on, you know, on the residential building, but that you also could have the option to do that. And I don't believe that was in the Santa Barbara one.
Okay. Yeah, I did want to ask, Matt, on page three of 14, in Attachment A, the first page of the solar access height limitations, second sentence in bold says, "This ordinance only applies in residential zones excluding the VMU zone." And I went back and I think read fairly carefully the ordinance a couple of times, and I, and it has a section, and this is on Attachment B, page one and two of two, it has a section entitled exemptions, and there's nothing there about VMU. And so I'm, I'm curious how the exemption for the VMU appeared in the program guidelines without being in the enabling ordinance.
That's a good question. I'll ask Sherri if she knows, but I know the VMU isn't technically considered a residential zone.
Well, it's, no, it's actually technically commercial, but.
Right.
The height limitation is all, it tells you what zones it does apply to. So it tells you it only applies to the R3 and the RS and the, and all residential zones. And then they don't have any detail for the VMU, so because it tells you what your height limitation is.
The ordinance is silent on the VMU.
Yes.
So then it's exempt, because here it doesn't list that it has to meet these.
I got you. Okay.
Sometimes it comes out backwards.
Let's, yeah. Okay. By omission, there's an exemption for the VMU.
Same thing the A and E ordinance said.
Okay. Another question, I was reading, before getting to this package, I was reading about the second unit compliance program, and that set of guideline, this was not before the Planning Commission, but that set of guidelines cited several city council resolutions over the years, plus at least one ordinance that was passed that were supporting those guidelines. And I'm, and it's still, even with that, it's not clear to me that the city council ever explicitly read the guidelines and said, yes, that embodies our direction in policy for the city. And I'm wondering, did the city council ever take up the subject, to your knowledge, and maybe, maybe a council member, Francina, would know, did the city council ever take up the topic of these solar access guidelines and say, yes or no, this embodies our policy priorities, or this does not violate any of our policy prescriptions?
In the minutes, when they adopted the solar guidelines, they said, take, use these solar access guidelines as a, you know, the city's draft, and bring them back to us. And we just never did.
I noticed that the ordinance in two or three places references the program guidelines. I didn't know if the program guidelines had in and of themselves ever been looked at by the council explicitly.
Sure, yes. Yes. They were looked at when they were adopting this height limitation code and the solar code.
Okay.
But they needed guidelines, and they didn't address the guidelines at the time that they adopted the access ordinance.
They weren't considering the guidelines at the time of adoption of the ordinance.
At that meeting, but they have seen them, yeah.
They just approved the ordinance at the time. Yeah, okay.
And they explicitly in the minutes said, take these guidelines, go back and, you know, draft up some and bring them back to us. And it just hasn't ever happened.
And staff has obviously drafted the program guidelines, but.
We had, and we've been using the draft guidelines for three years, so that's the chemical system.
Okay. Okay. Let me see. On, Matt, on page 10, Attachment A, page 10 of 14, the top paragraph there on that page, it's small i, i, entitled affordable housing, and this provides another special consideration in a development, which includes 25% or more dwelling units meeting the affordable, affordability criteria of the community development department. And I didn't, I didn't see anything on that topic in the ordinance. I'm wondering where that came from in the guidelines.
That's just general information. A project which is considered a density bonus or affordable project under state guidelines can seek concessions.
Okay. This appears to grant them a priori.
It actually says it shall receive special consideration.
Right, yeah.
So, yes, that is, that is correct. So, but it's only in, if the development seeks that specific concession.
Okay. So it shall receive special considerations if requested.
Right. It means it's something we have.
On state law.
Correct. Staff would have to look at this issue to see if the affordability would be compromised by the implementation, or the imposition of these restrictions under the solar guidelines. And if that's the case, the developer could seek concession, and depending on what, how many concessions are sought, that may be something the city is obligated to, to respect.
At least consider.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. It just, it sounded a little odd to me. If you have enough affordable housing in the structure that you have built, then you get to block your neighbor's solar access.
Right.
Is what it sounds like.
That is actually potentially the case.
Okay. I note also on page 10, the bottom paragraph, paragraph four, it says, "The effect of shade caused by vegetation shall not be a consideration." So if you have tall trees along the northern property line, then you don't have to do, you don't have to make any concession for the solar access of your northerly parcel neighbor.
That's the way this appears to read, correct. I'm not, I'm not quite sure how that works in application.
And I, and once again, I did not recall seeing anything on that topic in the ordinance, and, and so I'm just curious where it came from.
We will endeavor to try to find an answer to that. Yeah, maybe.
Could be.
I think it is.
Yeah, but I think it is too, because I remember the trees being a big issue. Nobody's going to cut down an oak tree in order to accommodate someone's solar.
Or, or any tree.
Yeah, well, right, but again, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It makes sense. It makes sense.
You know, it's existing plant material.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah.
Okay.
But, but I would suggest, I mean, I think if, if it's, if it is intended to be existing, which this does not use the word, then I think that that's appropriate to be added. I think that may be something you want to consider.
Existing, yeah.
And a person might just decide to plant tall trees along the northern property line, and they can do so.
And adversely impact their neighbor.
Without restriction.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's worthy of your consideration.
So perhaps just adding the word existing in front of vegetation?
Yep, that's what.
Yeah, okay. On page 11, paragraph small i, v, Roman i, v, talking about two- and three-story structures in the central business district, it talks about properties owned R3 or R4 and located in the central business district. And I, I admit to some confusion here, and I thank staff for providing at every meeting both a land use map and a planning map for, for the city of Ojai. I do not understand whether there are any R3 or R4 properties in the central business district. I'm not sure where the boundaries of the central business district are. They don't, it's not obvious to me on the zoning map. Maybe it's this dark blue line.
This might be the pedestrian hazard.
I don't know. It says, "Original redevelopment area and statement of theme," so I'm not, I'm not sure what the meaning of that is, or where the central business district is.
I would like the op, I would, I would recommend that the commission direct staff to reevaluate that whole section.
Okay.
Because.
Be a good idea.
Just by way of additional information, the height restriction is 25.
That was my next question. Where's the, where's the R4 anywhere?
Yeah, right. And, and the 20, the height restriction in all residential zones is 25 feet and two stories, so.
And this says three-story.
It does.
That was my question.
Three-story in the central business district?
Correct.
That's not a residential zone, I think.
So there is no central business district, there is no R3, and there's no three-stories. So, other than that, this is fine.
All right. That's, and that's fine. It, this is why we go through this stuff, is so that we can make sure that what we recommend to city council is, is.
Correct.
Correct.
So that, that whole section, Roman numeral four, needs to be.
Yeah. And to be precise, it is paragraph four, B.
And actually, I think it could be collapsed into the previous section. I don't think there needs to be a Roman numeral four whatsoever. We just need to make sure we reference the R3.
All right.
So.
All right.
And, and just by additional information, up to 30 feet can be permitted, subject to the review and approval of a DRP, a design review permit, by the Planning Commission. So it's 25 feet by right, and it doesn't make, that can be, as I read, that can apply to a one-story.
I do remember that, yeah, okay. Okay. Further on that same page, 11, paragraph five, A, required yard size. The code allows a modification of required yard size. I have to go back and take a look at the ordinance again, but I could not, I do not remember seeing that. Is it there? The only thing that I recall seeing about yard size had to do with the ordinance exemptions, which is sub-paragraph C, and sub-paragraph eight under that talked about any residential building on a lot exceeding 20,000 square feet.
Yes, I don't see any modification.
But I did not see anything about required yard size.
I agree with you.
And are you, is that, are you thinking of in reference to like lot coverage?
I, I don't know. It says allows a modification of required yard size, and I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what that means.
Again, I'm, I'm guessing this is just a carryover from the Santa Barbara ordinance. It doesn't look.
It doesn't look applicable.
Begs the question of what it, what it means.
I think you're talking about B, correct?
B?
Yeah. And in reference to BI, is that the one, modification we granted?
I think, I, actually, I think what it's referring to.
In a required yard dimension.
I think it's referring to setback.
Could be, could be.
I think, I think it's, I think.
Maybe if the language were further adapted to be more consistent with the Ojai code.
Right.
Then I'd be able to understand at least.
If you look at, if you look at B, Roman numeral one, a modification may be granted up to 50% reduction required yard.
This is in the ordinance itself?
Yeah, that's where I was looking, back to B.
So I think, I think, I think it's using yard in lieu of the term setback, but the word setback should be applied here. So I think, I think, I think it's using yard in lieu of the term setback, but the word setback should be applied here.
Okay. Okay.
It's a good catch.
So that, anyway, I think it just, uh, some rewording would, would make it a lot more understandable. And particularly since the guidelines are something that the, that the city staff is going to provide to just citizens who walk in the door. We, I think we need to go the extra mile to make it as understandable as possible. Uh, and, yeah, so B on page twelve and B one, uh, required yard dimension could be reworded as well.
That's the one where we should add setback.
Should do. If that, if that's what required yard dimension means, then we should state it that way, I think. If it means something else, then I don't know what it means. Um, and, and we need some clarification. Uh, further down that page on B three, it talks about a required interior may be eliminated so as to allow the joining of structures.
Yeah.
Um, is that a required interior access or, I'm, I'm not sure what, what, what the reference is there.
Nor I.
Perhaps there is a definition written somewhere. I don't know. I, I do, in, in spite of all these questions, I have to say, when you get down to these solar access shadow diagram preparation instructions and the diagrams themselves and in fact this little two-page handout, I think it, those things by themselves make the city's current requirements, assuming it's all consistent with the ordinance, very clear to anyone who walks in the door. And I compliment staff on that. I think before we have the guidelines, um, further promulgated to the citizens, that we need some of that clarification.
Agreed.
And my preference would be rather than to recommend passing this on to the city council right now, that we direct staff to, to make the clarifications and changes that we've discussed here and bring this back at the next appropriate meeting. I, I don't know how long it would take to do some of that stuff, so. It didn't, it didn't look like it would be a long time, but, um, I would, I would prefer that and I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Actually, I'd recommend you take public comment before.
Oh, yes. I, I apologize. Are there any other questions for staff? Okay, then we'll, uh, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to, uh, comment on this item?
Thank you. I'm Michael Haley. Um, I just have a question, which is, uh, we're sitting there talking and our solar panels are flat on the roof. So what difference does it make if, if you, if you're legal to put your roof up? So that's the question that we don't understand.
The, the discussion, as I understood it here, was not about whether the panels are on the same, are, are parallel to the roof.
Right.
But rather whether the panels are at the most efficient angle compared to the sun.
Right. So you'd have to find a spot on your roof that.
Or, or it may be that.
Do people put stands up on top of their houses? Is that what we're talking about?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I guess I've never seen that.
Yeah, the, the bottom edge of a solar panel may be right down on the shingles and the top edge, it has a structure under it to raise the, the angle of the panel to more efficiently produce electricity.
Okay. Does that cover the question there, madam?
I think so.
Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right, then we'll close the public hearing. Any additional discussion by the commission?
No, I think that's good. I think we, I think we got.
Make a motion?
I think we, we did some good vetting.
Do we have to make a motion because it's a discussion item or?
Well, the recommendation, the recommendation was to recommend the guidelines to the city council.
Right, but we're saying.
Before we do that, I think we need some changes.
I agree to that too.
We need to vote on that. That's the question.
I think, um, I think, well, the recommendations are receive public comment and then recommend the city council adopt these.
All we need to know is, do you want it to come back to you or are you good with us fixing it and forwarding it to the council?
So I think a motion would be appropriate in that case.
A minute, it could be, just be a minute motion. It doesn't have to be roll call.
Right.
Oh, okay.
So the recommendation would be to direct staff to revise these and bring them back to the commission at a later date.
In light of the discussion we've had this evening.
Yes, agreed.
And come back at the next.
Understood.
Appropriate time. Okay? Well, very good. I love that. All right. The next, uh, the next agenda item is future agenda items.
Mr., uh, vice chairman, um, as you can see, we don't have any permits, um, scheduled. Uh, we did indicate that the League of Cities will be conducting its annual Planning Commissioners Academy, uh, in April. Taking note of that. Um, I will, uh, if there's interest, please let, uh, Sherry know as quickly as possible. There have been some budget issues, um, with recent requests and, uh, I would have to, uh, bring those to the attention of the city manager as soon as possible.
And this is farther away than down at El Segundo or wherever the last one was.
The other one was in San Francisco.
Yeah, well, and actually this is.
Bobby and I went to one last year, and John Merck.
Oh, you did?
That was somewhere along Century Boulevard, I think.
Oh, okay.
Right by the airport.
Oh, I didn't go to that one.
And I, I would note that although we haven't indicated any permits, uh, for the next, uh, few meetings, um, we are, just in the last couple of weeks, talking to a lot more people about new projects. So I expect in the next ninety days we'll be seeing more applications. But it'll, it'll be some time before they reach your desk, but, um, we have been kind of in a lull in terms of new applications, uh, for the last three months or so.
Okay. Any, any other questions on this? I, I do if no one else does. Please go ahead.
Well, I just have some suggestions for discussion items for the planning commission.
Good.
That have to do that we're a planning commission. And in lieu of, um, what's occurred recently in the valley and the city with the Thomas fire, I think, uh, it would behoove the planning commission to have a discussion about, um, one, affordable housing, building codes, zoning, where to house people when there's an emergency. I know some of that may seem like the Babs, but.
Some of it is, yeah.
Um, but if they're not taking it up in a very diligent, urgent matter, I would like to have a discussion in the planning commission regarding that and making suggestions regarding alternative building materials other than stick building.
That's, that's definitely a BAB topic. I think they have a fairly full plate as dictated by the city council at this point. They have a good sized task list, but.
And we don't, so.
We don't. That's true.
I was, this is kind of somewhat related to what Raymond brought up.
The SLRI.
Yeah, so I wanted to bring that up also. Um, so at our, um, January joint meeting, uh, we brought up the talk, topic of the Sustainability Committee. And basically council, and correct me if I'm, if I got this wrong, but they, they basically said, why don't you call it a working group instead of a subcommittee?
This is the Sustainability Committee, you mean? Yeah, okay.
So, um, and prior to that meeting, we had been kind of loosely working on bringing up the Sustainable Living Research Initiative, also water and fire. Those were kind of our live topics, so to speak. So I have continued to do some work. Tomorrow night, Commissioner Quilzi and I are going to meet and we're going to be doing, working on some more of that and.
With a BAB member.
With a BAB member. Well, no, are we meeting with the BAB? Not, I think that's going to be later, but we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
Um, so basically what we're hoping to propose and, and maybe what we could do, and I think this would be smart, is to bring it to the planning commission, like our report. Um, I guess we'd have to, you know, bring it to staff first and then somehow be able to work through it with plan in the, of the full commission.
I, I, I would think that if we come to some conclusions, in particular about fire and water.
Right, which is our, like I said, our live topic.
That before we bring it to the full commission, we should ask for staff review and inputs.
Does that seem like?
It's more, more notification than permission, but I think, I think staff's experience in these areas would be valuable to our considerations.
And so basically what we're doing is the Babs, they're looking at the building side of it, Title Nine, and then planning commission, we're looking at Title Ten, but there's definitely overlap. And we, you know, we talked to council and we got approved that, you know, we collaborated on signs, we don't violate the Brown Act. So basically we're bringing pretty much like the water and fire, Title Nine and Title Ten together and kind of doing a master report or a recommendation that will ultimately go to city council. And hopefully what'll, I mean, the intention is if we need to revise any of our code or ordinances or modify them or introduce something new that's not in there, that's what we're, that's kind of our task at hand. And I agree, um, I'd still like to look at the Sustainable Living Research Initiative. It kind of ties in with all of that. It may be the way to, um, pilot projects, something in that presently isn't in the code, but something we'd like to have the opportunity to explore as a community. You know, providing that it's, you know, meets the health, safety and welfare components.
I, I would think that it, for a pilot project of that sort, we probably don't need to go putting it in the code. I mean, people put an awful lot of things in the California constitution that are arguably appropriate.
And that's with that Living Research Initiative, yeah.
The council could give its approval to doing a pilot project without modifying the code.
But if they, if we had that Sustainable Living Research Initiative, um, it allows to do the pilot projects for something that's not presently in the code and to test it and to document it and gather data. And then it's like, well, if it works, great, maybe we allow a couple more permits. I'm just using this for example, mind you. Um, and then it's something that at some point we might say, great, we want to allow an alternate building material or, um, an overlay on zoning for cluster housing. I'm just using these for examples once again.
Well, they're great examples because one of the, you know, the, the conversation I want to have
Right.
is on the larger pot parcels to limit those homeowners to only being able to build one ADU if they have two or three acres. Um, there needs to be an overlay, I feel, so.
Sort of eliminates the idea of family compounds if you're only allowed to have one ADU.
Yes.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too.
And that, that is certainly an issue that falls under land use and would be appropriate for consideration by the planning commission. I had another one, um, that I mentioned briefly at the joint meeting with the city council. And that is, is it appropriate for the planning commission upon receipt of a request for a development permit of some sort to consider whether or not there is sufficient water in that area so that fire suppression is possible on the location for which the permit is sought? And if it is, and if it is not, and I'm not saying that we know either way right now, and then is, is that a valid basis for the planning commission to say, at this time, we reject your request to develop that property because fire suppression is not possible there?
And I think that should be included in our report that we're putting together.
Yeah.
And I agree with you a hundred percent. It's something that we need to look at because we're, we're.
We got really lucky that we didn't have big ember showers throughout the city.
Because we don't have adequate water and pressure and volume.
I think we don't, but I don't know for sure.
Well, based on the map that I've looked at, there are, there's some, there are voids and.
Oh, the mayor lives in a void.
Right.
But, but in terms of hard data on what water pressure and flow is available at different points in the city, from what I've been able to tell so far, we have zero data after the middle of twenty fourteen.
And I think we're, I think we're still working off of that old data.
I think so.
So some of that may have been upgraded. We don't know. So that needs to be updated.
Parts that were okay then may not be now. We just don't know. I've heard, yeah. I've heard that the real problem when the theater was flooded was not so much that the water main broke and leaked, but that when the attempt was made to shut off the valve there, the valve could not be shut. And so it's not just the hydrants, it's the valves in between the hydrants that need, that need, according to American Water Works Association at least, should be checked and the tests recorded at least once every three years.
Right, right.
So the conversation, um, you're bringing up now dovetails with some of the building codes. So if there's an area that's a higher, um, a higher fire risk, having alternative building materials in those areas that are more fire resilient.
Exactly.
Straw bale, cob, super, dobre, whatever earthen structures that don't burn and that the windows can be covered up so those don't break, um, that could mitigate.
I, I would, I would suggest that we have a discussion of topics of that sort and that if you have, um, hard data about straw bales, just to take an example, and their fire resistant properties, that you bring that to the discussion and then we can, we can decide whether to recommend to city council that there be a modification uh, without having provided, uh, in effect, I guess we'd be providing a term sheet. But, but without going to the exercise of city staff to draft an ordinance until we send that to a city council and they say, yes, we agree or we don't agree that that's an appropriate thing to go work the code. Okay, um, did we have some interest, by the way, back on future agenda items and schedules? Any interest here amongst the five to attend the Planning Commissioners Academy in Monterey, uh, the first week of April? Okay?
You can let us know within the next week.
Yeah, you know, I have had a question. I, um, I'm, I realize, you know, I go, oh, I'm interested. But I also realize, I don't know if it's just me, but Chester, maybe it's just the two of us. Is our term up? Were you going to?
I asked, I asked the city clerk and she said she'd get in touch with everyone soon.
I was talking about, is it, I think, is it just the two of us that our term is up at the end of May? Is that correct? Okay.
The city clerk will get in touch.
Okay.
It's up to you to decide whether to apply for reappointment.
I don't think that's automatic. I think that.
No.
You, you.
You'll have to reapply, yes.
Right, but you, yeah, but you don't automatically are appointed. You have to go through the process.
Yeah, the interview process.
At the end of your four years, you have to ask again. We just saw that at the city council meeting. So, I did have a couple of questions. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment, speaking of sustainability, about the fact that our water supply is treacherously low and our water company is reticent to deal with this issue. And it seems to me that that's the most pressing issue that we have at this point. I don't know how many of you have seen the plan that was submitted by the, um, what are they called? The Ojai Water Board, the group of people.
OB GMA?
No, no, no. It's, it's.
Oh, Water Advisory Group, okay.
Right, the Water Advisory Group. And they've put together a really good plan that brings together, you know, the water needs of the county as opposed to each individual. And the only roadblock at this point in time is Casitas. And the other two, which is Caligas, is that, am I saying that right?
Cayegus. Cayegus.
Cayegus, Caligas, anyway.
That's Eastern County.
And City of Ventura, they're gonna, they're gonna do something. And it beho, it, it's in everybody's best interest if Casitas gets on board and we do it together. And why they're crabbing around with this, excuse me, when the, at the best possible scenario is it'll take four years to get outside water here if everything went according to plan. I don't think we have that much water left. So it seems that every single group, board, commission in this city really needs to get on board with this. And there are a million things you could talk about, but. And there are a million things you could talk about, but if we don't have water, there's no sense talking about any of them.
Would it, would it be possible to, to at least look into agendizing a presentation from the Water Advisory Group to the commission? I mean, there's even a former commission member on the Water Advisory Group, right.
We've all talked about water a lot. I, I can send it to you and it's pretty detailed.
Okay, send it to Matt. If, if you're distributing it, then it looks like the beginning of deliberations, which is a Brown Act violation. So if you send it to Matt, then he can distribute it. Or Sherry, yeah. That would be great. Yes, please, yes, please, go ahead.
So I, along those lines, I had mentioned, do we want to agendize, you know, a workshop for us for water and fire? And we can, we can bring our report back and everyone can bring something to it and essentially, you know, kind of a workshop, any commission workshop.
Workshop, discussion item, whatever you want to call it, I think we should be doing that.
And especially because we're not booked with projects coming in. Matt, would we, tonight, could we set, set a time aside? I don't know if we'd want to do the seventh or the twenty first, or is that possible?
I would, I would guess the twenty first to give everybody time to pull stuff together.
We're gonna need to bring things to you too. Okay.
So we'll call it a fire and water workshop, or I don't know, whatever.
What do you, what does everybody else think? Are you, is everyone open to that?
Twenty first of March.
But if it goes longer, you will.
Would that work for you? I did that once and thoroughly enjoyed it.
The twenty first is March Wednesday. I'm looking, I'm looking at this, yeah. I'm looking at our regular Planning Commission schedule.
Have a discussion item slash workshop on the topic. I think that'd be a great idea. No, as a part of the Planning Commission meeting, that we specifically agendize this discussion.
So it'd be a workshop on water and fire issues?
Yeah.
Right.
And, and we can also, at the same time, since the things that Commissioner Powers has brought up,
study session.
relate to water and fire, you could bring that to the same discussion.
One more note, the April meeting will, first meeting will probably need to be canceled because if commissioners are at the train, at the League of Cities, we won't have a quorum.
We're only six right now, so.
Another comment, if I may?
Please.
I also wanted to say because, you know, we, we talked about meeting with a couple BAB members and Planning Commission members. What we jointly discussed was if the Planning Commission thought about something that actually related to title nine, bring it anyway. And likewise, if they think of something that we didn't think of, bring it anyways. We're not, we're here to like work together, not, you know, just in isolation and say, oh, you missed that, so too bad.
As long as we don't have a quorum of either body, we can meet and have these discussions. I, I do have one question along that line. Since the Planning Commission currently consists of six people, what is a quorum? Is a quorum still four?
Four.
Okay, so we could have three commission members meet with
Outside of.
two members of the BAB.
Informally, sure.
And, and start throwing the eyes, ideas together that we could as individual bodies with quorums hold public discussions.
Then in addition, we can add more, you know, when we're here on the twenty first.
I, I, okay, any other, any other questions? We got kind of deep into, into scheduling here. But Matt, I'm curious, you have a DRP seventeen oh one on the city bike park. That's the, the thought of a motocross type thing for bicycles behind city hall?
Actually, it's, it would be at, at Libby Park.
At Lower Libby Park, okay.
Complete Streets, we've talked about it.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure. And the items three through six, I guess, FTM's final tract maps and final parcel map. Is that something, is that, are those items that are going to come back before the Planning Commission?
No.
Those are things that are go, just going to city council?
Correct. Final maps go directly to city council.
Okay, and the concept review to city council?
That is the Ojai Avenue and Bald Street project that the Planning Commission previously considered. The, the owner would like to pursue that concept, which would require a general plan amendment. So that will go to the city council for their.
Okay, or an overlay or a waiver or something, which only city council can, can grant, okay. And the last one on Boku, since they haven't opened yet, what are they adding? Do you recall?
Sherry? They currently are an office space, but the ancillary use is to do the production of their, their superfoods that, and it's something that's manufacturing.
Stuff like that.
And manufacturing is not allowed in commercial zone unless it's an ancillary use to something else. So it's gonna be that ancillary use, but we don't have all the, we've sent them an incomplete letter and not received anything.
Oh, I see, okay, because I thought we had discussed some of that when they first came before us in a concept review, right?
Currently, they're just permitted for administrative warehouse purposes.
Okay, very good. Fine report, thank you. Any other comments on this?
I, I have a question. Where are we at with the ADU conversation? Are we complete on that? Is that coming back to us or we're complete?
The Planning Commission recommended a modification to the ADU ordinance. And I think city council approved that.
Yes, that was approved early last year.
If, if you, if you still have issues with any part of that, just go to the city website and, and look for ADUs and it'll call out, I think it's ten two seventeen oh nine, I think is, is the part of the code. And you might want to just read through that and see if you still have any issues.
Yeah, I don't have issues about what we recommended, more so additions of what I already spoke of tonight.
Okay, okay. Well, let's move on to agenda item number four. The liaison schedule and reports. Chair Merk is not here today to report on the city council from January twenty third, but Commissioner Nolan is on the February thirteenth.
Right, well, number one, I have to plead guilty that I didn't realize, probably because we had the, about a six week lapse, that I was on the thirteenth and I probably had forgot to take this with me from early February. And I didn't realize it till I got my pack and I go, oh my gosh, I was supposed to be there. So I ended up listening to the, you know, the taped version, although I, I listened to the first four hours and I, I admit that I only went that far and I didn't go blind it. But I'll, I'll report what I did watch. Find it. I hope I've got, brought the right, oh, here it is, good. Oh, I thought this was interesting. I just heard this recently also in our Complete Streets. But one of the first items was, and this was from Ventura County Transportation Commission, VCTC, and this was in regards to the trolley. And, you know, there's always an issue about the amount or percentage of citizens using the, using the trolley and if it's, you know, cost effective.
It's the fare box revenue compared to the cost of the system.
Exactly. And so basically, we, the city of Ojai is actually, we are considered a urbanized area and rather than a rural area. And the interesting thing was this has to do, we're clustered with Oxnard.
And Ventura.
And Ventura because between Oxnard and Ventura, there's that small little bit of development like in Casita Springs, it happens to exceed a thousand residential units, I believe it is.
It's a density of a thousand per square mile.
Square mile.
But it doesn't say how big a piece of property has to have that characteristic.
Right, it's just within that square mile. So because that is there, there's like a continual connection up into the Ojai Valley. And that puts the city of Ojai in, within an urban.
State designation.
Exactly, designation. And so what that does, then it affects the funding for the trolley. So basically, if you're in a rural area, I don't see if I, know if I've got the exact number, but I just know that there's, I'm sure I wrote it down, but.
There's a different fare box recovery for.
Yes, exactly.
Rural area, the fare box has to contribute ten percent.
Ten percent, and in the urban, it's fifteen to twenty. So apparently, and a lot of this is based with, on the census, which won't be coming up, the federal one till twenty twenty. And at that point, I guess the city can, I don't know if argue is the best word, but.
Yeah, be reconsideration.
Be consider, yeah, and try to, to. Exactly. So that was really interesting, and I know that came up at Complete Streets for, I know some of the grants, they'll ask, you know, if you're an urban area or a rural area. We kept thinking we were rural, but we're not.
The question, the rejoinder might be by what standards are we urban or rural?
So anyway, I thought that was interesting. Right, and then Captain Freihoff gave a, a very good report, mostly in regards to the Thomas Burn area and also watershed assessment. And so basically, he was just mostly talking about, okay, if we get more rain, he was talking about evacuation warnings and what to do and what have you. But basically what they're saying is if it's between a half and three quarters of an inch per hour and there's that increased debris flow, that there will definitely be evacuations depending on the area. He highly advised everyone to sign up for VC Alert, and I'm just, I know this is televised, please sign up for VC Alert. I know I am and I've got, I get a text, I get a phone call and I get an email. So pretty much, no matter where I'm at, you know, even with electricity goes, I'll get it on my cellphone. But that's super important, so for anyone who can do that. Once again, Nordeuff High School would, would be the evacuation shelter center. And then he said about the, the evacuations. If it's mandatory, they try to go door to door, they come around, you know, with a loudspeaker. I know I had that happen to me when I lived in Santa Barbara for an evacuation. But you can't always do that. So really, the VC Alert is, is one of the best things that anyone can do in the community to be aware of what's going on. And then Greg Grant, our Public Works Director, tied on to that discussion and talked about debris management. And let's see, presently, he has a grant for funding for cleaning out Stewart Fox Canyon and above Daly Park. There might have been more to it, but those were the, the main areas. And pretty much.
The debris basin at the bottom of Stewart Canyon and the seven foot pipe that carries debris down past the Bank of America here and into the Baranca just to our west, has been cleared.
Yeah, and they're in the process.
Six or seven foot diameter pipe, and if you get a couple of trees stuck in it, then we're gonna have floods.
Yeah, they happened to show, they showed a picture of a giant, you know, well, they showed two men in it, so assuming they were six feet tall and there was still like several feet. So it might have been an eight or ten foot diameter pipe standing in, in Montecito, and then you could see all these trees and debris blocking the end of it. So that's what they're doing. And I believe they had, there's a time limitation on the two, so you have to act right away if you get that grant and take advantage of it. And that makes sense, and, you know, in case we get rain. Then the other topic was, that came up, was this ordinance about sterilizing all cats and dogs and a microchip added, added to it so that all these, these animals would get microchipped. And it passed. If you have any questions on that, but.
I think the, the key there was the proposed ordinance or whatever started out specifying spaying and neutering.
Right, and they were changing the language.
Changed to sterilization, which allows
Different methods.
Different procedures that achieve the same end with potentially different side effects.
Right. Oh, then the other thing they brought up was the Clean Power Alliance, and this has to do with the, the energy program. So basically, if I, if I got this correct, it looks like they're gonna go ahead with it. And every, you know, citizen still has the right to, you know, opt in or out. It'll show up on your Edison bill. So, or even if you opt in and you decide you want to opt out, you still can do that.
The default is opt in.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, a hundred percent. Let's see. Okay, and then the other thing was they, this was ratifying new members for BAB Historic Preservation Parks and Rec. And they decided to reinstate the entire BAB board. Also, let's see, they talked about the nuclear free, free zone resolution. And that passed. And then the other thing that came up was the Fannie Mae grant for Tiny House Village. And they didn't come to a conclusion, but basically what, what the applicant, the applicants for that grant are a private business and a nonprofit, the nonprofit's the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. And within that grant, they need to include some property locations, and they're looking to the city to put those locations or APN numbers in the grant. The city is not, if I'm understanding this correctly, is not obligated if the applicants do in fact receive the grant. They, at that time, they could say, well, we've decided we don't want to, or they, I think they can, you know, give more details of parameters. But at this point, they were just asking for a letter. And they didn't quite come to a conclusion, so they're gonna be scheduling a special meeting tomorrow night, Thursday.
At noon.
But are they doing another one at night too?
There's not one at night.
Oh, I misunderstood that, so it's just at noon, okay. So it's noon tomorrow. Thank you for, because I thought there was two meetings tomorrow.
I think I'll send all the commissioners when I send you.
Okay. And then I will have to admit that I stopped there. So there's, I'm sure there's more.
Okay. I don't know, Commissioner Powers, were you able to attend the BAB meeting of January sixteenth? Okay, we'll defer that report then. I did attend the February twelfth meeting of the Building Appeals Board. At least some of it. They, they voted to forward criteria and findings on fire safety to the city council. Basically, general comments related to modifying the Cal Fire map with respect to Ojai's sphere of influence. I had to leave early because I'm also on the School Board Seven Eleven Committee and I had to attend a mandatory meeting at that, at seven o'clock that evening. But they did discuss fire safety and send comments on to the city council. And I believe it was on the agenda that there was a presentation on fire safety that took place after I left. And you saw that?
I was actually at the meeting. Yes, they, they, they talked further about fire safety, and I think one of the topics that got bounced around the most, and I actually got up and commented myself, was basically clarification on definitions. You know, they were saying, well, you could put natives in the defensible space, not, and I said, well, it's more complicated than that. So Cal Fire agreed, they had, you know, a representative there, that all of that language about what type of plant material is acceptable, what isn't, what is an invasive species, what isn't, you know, what lists to work off of. But that may fall, some of that falls into what we can do here as in planning. Because some of it falls into the landscape, landscape guidelines. So we can do that.
I would have thought that a discussion of invasive species in, in that context would deal with the, the fire hazard severity of individual invasive species, not whether they were invasive or not.
Yeah, but we can talk about that more. I mean, it's, it sounds a little complicated, but it probably isn't, but I mean, that.
But there, there were a number of, yeah, there were a number of things in what the BAB forwarded to the city council on the twelfth.
They agreed in the end, you know, after several people got up and spoke, that, yeah, things need to be really clear and defined. And if, if guidelines need to be included or lists, that it just needs to, the information needs to be very accurate and clear.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Good. And I, and I did get the contact information from two people there that we can actually. Good. And I did get the contact information from two people there, that we can actually, as a commission, contact if we need more information. And in addition, I'll throw this thing just because it's related, because we, this came up at the Tree Committee also this week, or last week. And we had a representative from Cal Fire there also.
Good, yeah.
So, so we have resources that we can, we can tap into.
Okay. And I, as luck would have it, I attended the BAB meeting last night. So I can report in lieu of Commissioner Corbin. The meeting lasted about 15 minutes. It was continued. The main topic at the meeting, the main agenda item, was an appeal of a city building official decision on a parcel at 109 North Fulton. And the matter was continued at the request of the city attorney for what he called legal issues not related to the merits of the case before the board. And so, and incidentally, there were only four board members voting because the appeal of the city building official was made by the chair of the Building Appeals Board, who happened to be the owner of the parcel. So he had to recuse himself to be the appellant. But we never got to any discussion of the merits of the, of the appeal or even of the case itself at the request of the city attorney. And so at 6:15 or so, the meeting was adjourned. And presumably, it'll come back at the March meeting of the BAB.
I have a question about that.
Yes, sir.
Chair. So isn't that a case, and forgive me if this is not the right form for that, but isn't that, wouldn't that be a case where that appeal would go to the city council to?
No, no, no. If, it's in the municipal code that an appeal of a decision by the city building official goes to the Building Appeals Board. And decisions, and this is unique among city boards and commissions. But whereas any decision that we make as a planning commission is appealable to the city council, by state law, the decisions of the Building Appeals Board with regard to appeals of city building official decisions are not appealable to the city council. They are final.
Hmm.
The city council can't overrule that.
The city, you cannot appeal a BAB opinion, at least narrowly drawn as an appeal of a city building official decision.
No, I get it.
There could have been other issues in that case which were never surfaced last night.
Yeah.
And some of those might come back to Planning Commission or might be.
So that has.
Otherwise appealable to city council.
That has to do with how the city has chosen its governance. Because some cities don't have a BABs. City council does the role of the BABs.
All cities by state law now have a, a Building Appeals Board, whatever the name is. There is a housing board, and there's a third body. And by Ojai municipal code, all three of those functions are assigned to the Building Appeals Board.
Hmm, okay.
But only certain of those decisions that the BAB makes are not appealable.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah. All right. To continue, we have our city council liaison, Councilmember Francina. I invite you to the podium to give us some words of wisdom.
Oh, I wish I had some words of wisdom for you. I just always want to appreciate your service. And especially how, I'm always impressed by how closely Commissioner Quilis, he reads every word. I appreciate, you know, I took note of that. I mainly, Commissioner Nolan Kathleen, Kathy, said basically what I want to say. You might find tomorrow's meeting at noon interesting. And I'll send you the handouts, which includes letters from the, from the public, letters of support. Are you familiar with it? It's called the Fannie Mae Sustainable Communities Innovation Challenge. And we hope that they grant us $500,000. That's what the goal is, is a grant.
What would the, what would the five, if we were granted the $500,000, what would the city council's intention be with the expenditure of those funds?
Well, when you read the information I'll send you, that all has to be decided, okay? We envision a whole lot of community meetings to decide what, exactly how that money will be spent. But what we're proposing is, you know, some kind of, how do I describe? I don't want to say it wrong. A tiny house on foundation, possibly tiny house on wheels to provide affordable by design workforce housing. And what they're looking for is something that can be duplicated nationwide. That's what they're looking for, not just here. Okay?
So you could be talking about an Ojai-specific pilot project along those lines?
Yes, yes, yes.
We don't need to modify the state law or modify the municipal code.
No.
Necessarily.
Well, we're going to, some of this is coming before us anyway in March. But there's nothing that we need to do to proceed with the application. The application is due Friday. And basically, all we're adding.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's why there's a special meeting tomorrow at noon. Yeah. So I'll send you that. And then as far as the, that document published by the Ojai Valley Water Advisory Group that was mentioned, I went today, I thought there was a meeting about this at three o'clock. But when I got there, I was told they're gonna hold a workshop about it. So about the content of this 42-page report. That's my understanding. So, that's all I have.
I have a general question.
Okay.
Is the Water Advisory Group a body, is it a Brown Act body? Is it a part of the city government? Are the members thereof appointed by the city council?
Well.
Is there a way that the public knows when the Water Advisory Group is meeting? Or is that appropriate?
You know, I'm not quite sure how to answer that. My, my understanding and impression was that it's independent, was independent. Do you know?
Like?
Independent.
Committee?
No, it's not. It's more independent than that. I mean.
Oh, okay.
The city council asked the Tree Committee to be an advisory board, but group.
Okay.
But this is, I don't.
So the Water Advisory Group is a self-selected body outside the city government?
Yeah.
That's my understanding.
Yeah. The title of this report is "A Cooperative Regional Approach to Improving Ventura County's Water Supply Reliability." And the people involved include your former planning commissioner, Rosalie.
Yes.
And it's prepared by Richard Hages, is that how you pronounce his name, who is really a supreme water expert. The people involved all have expertise in water, is my impression, in various aspects of water. So, okay, that's all I have to say. Do you have anything you would like to ask me?
So you have a copy of that report?
Yes.
Can you get it to Sherri?
Is it a soft copy?
No, I specifically asked for the city clerk to print this for me. So this is my cop, my only hard copy. I'm gonna, I think that you're going to send them a copy, right, of this electronically? Yeah, you should all definitely have a copy.
Yeah. If, well, if a city clerk has a soft copy, then distributing that to all the members of the commission, all six members of the commission.
Yeah, you could just, I just requested it. I think.
Okay, so Sherri can get it.
This was when I got, when I received this, it went out to at least 50 people. There was like, you know, several paragraphs of emails. And then those people sent it to all their friends. I personally sent it to 10 people. I just thought by now that it would have circulated. Yeah. Well, this is good that we, that you'll be getting it.
Glad you talked about that.
Yeah.
This, the title of the report, on its face, is, is a group of words that should be of interest to every member of the community.
Yes, we, this, I mean, to me, everyone in Ojai should read this. I sent it to everyone that I knew was interested, was concerned about water, which is just about everyone. So it's circulating, yeah.
Okay. Well, Sherri, if you can get the city clerk to send us all a copy, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. So I'll email you all tonight, the rest of you.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to comment on the nature of that group. You know, what's been occurring since Lake Casitas has, has been diminished and since the fire, is a lot of community advocacy and activism. The Water Advisory Group is one of those, where a group of residents said, we have the expertise, we're gonna get together and provide some data and a strategic plan. Another group is the Ojai Valley Restoration and Resiliency Council, which has been meeting at the library twice already. Fifty, sixty people with breakout groups, experts in building and water and fire. So it's, the, the community has catalyzed together. And then presenting to governance and the leadership the strategic plans they're coming up with. Because, you know, the city and staff have their hands full, and they also don't have expertise in every area. And there is so much talent within the Ojai Valley. So it's really this beautiful symbiosis between governments, governance, and their constituency, right? And because, well, even with economic, you know, Ojai doesn't really have a long-term economic strategy that's planned out. But there's residents that do have some ideas. Oh, how can we not be so reliant on, you know, quantity A for our, for our budget needs? Maybe there's other options to bring in revenue into the city. So there's just, there's just many, many groups being formed, such as WAG. WAG's a little ahead of the curve. But for instance, in November, there's a conference on, I don't know exact, is the exact name, but on ecotourism and how to create Ojai as an ecotourism sustainability model as a revenue stream. And there's a whole conference being planned around that. And I guess now's a good time also to say, even I'll do it again, Earth Day is happening again this year, that the Green Coalition is sponsoring.
It's in April sometime.
That's on April 21st. And this year, it's at Libby Park with many community organizations, many speakers, different performances, experts, maybe someone from WAG, in all sorts of areas that are of our concern, especially since after the Thomas Fire, that the community will be able to hear and learn from. It's 11 to 4 on April 21st at Libby Park.
Well, I would, I would just quietly ask then that any commission member, or for those of you that are out there in the public watching this, or at some point watching this, if you know of people on these bodies, or you are part of them, and you would like to have the Planning Commission entertain and discuss any of the ideas put forth by these groups, we would invite you to come, at least during public communications. Maybe these things would be of sufficient interest to the commission that we could agendize them on a future meeting. But we are, we are tasked as a commission with helping the city council form policy on land use and zoning. And certainly, a lot of this has to do with land use. And I think it's incumbent on us to cast as wide a net as we can, looking for ideas where we as a commission can recommend things to the city council to improve the lives of all the people here, to make it, make it simple. So that's a great idea. And if you know some of those folks, or if you are one of those folks, then, then let's bring these ideas in and kick them around and figure out if there's something formally we can do to recommend to the city council to make changes in the governance. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question for my fellow planning commissioners. And this has to, this is involved with Earth Day. We could potentially have a Complete Streets booth there like we do at Ojai Day. And as Complete Streets has to do and was initially, came into place with Arnold Schwarzenegger, who was our governor at the time, it had to do with AB 32, and it had to do with the environment. So Complete Streets is very much a part of that. So I guess I'm asking, you know, is that, do I have your permission?
To what?
To go, to possibly have a booth for Complete Streets at Earth Day. I have to do a little more inquiry about it, but.
Well, I'm on the planning committee of Earth Day, and I'm all for it.
I just felt like, you know, I need to get the official approval. Oh, okay. Because, you know, I hang up, I have the banner and has the city seal on it. Now, you know, I want to make sure that.
Yes.
You know, and I guess I would have to maybe ask staff, too, also, if that's permissible.
Is there, is there a consensus on the commission that having a subcommittee of the commission take part in Earth Day in a more formal manner, would that seem like a good idea? Okay. Well, then, in the absence of any objection, as our mayor says, so ordered.
If they accept me, I'll be there.
Okay.
And whoever else wants to join.
All right. Any other business that is appropriate to bring before the commission at this point? If not, at 7:28, we're, oh, yes, sir.
I just want to, on behalf of the city clerk, ask that the commission help in perhaps identifying potential candidates to fill the vacancy on the Planning Commission.
I've seen an ad in the paper for the new opening.
Correct. We're currently recruiting. There has, as you point out, been ads in the paper. I believe it's on the city's website as well. But we'd appreciate any, any help from the commission who have strong contacts in the community to perhaps identify candidates who may be interested in serving.
Okay. So all of you out there, if you're interested, or you know somebody that you think ought to be on the Planning Commission, let the city know, please. And with that, at 7:29, we're adjourned.